Okay, so we'll call this meeting to order. Welcome to the special board of finance.
We're recording and started.
Meeting of the board of finance, December 16th. We'll call this meeting to order. Can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic.
And to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so welcome, everybody. Ms. Kupcheck sends her condolences. She cannot hear. But I do see we have Mr. Schmidt, we have the board of ed, and anyone else from town hall coming tonight, Mr. Schmidt? Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Baldwin is on as well. Jim Baldwin's on.
Okay, you and Mr. Baldwin. Okay, so we have three voting items tonight. We have the first vote, purchasing of the land and existing buildings for Giant Steps. We will hear a request from the purchasing policy committee, and then we will approve our meeting schedule for 2021. And then we'll hear and consider an act. We'll start with item number three. To hear, consider. One million, one hundred and twenty-three.
Mr. Chairman, you're kind of in and out. We heard about two words of that.
Okay, can you hear me? Okay?
Yes, no.
You're breaking up.
Okay, I will try this again. If not, I'll have to go to someplace else in my house here. Am I still breaking up?
We can hear you now.
Okay, so item number three. To hear, consider an act of protest from the board of selectmen for a special appropriation in the amount of $5,123,928 for the cost of purchasing land and existing buildings to operate the Walter Fitzgerald High School campus. Moving costs, improvements related here too, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola. Okay, this is now before us. Mr. Schmidt, we'll turn it over to you to start.
I think I'm going to pass it on to Angeles, Mr. Papa George.
Hey, Mr. Papa George.
Good evening, everyone. So, as you heard, the board of selectmen on Monday approved the appropriation. Where before you today, the intent is to purchase the 309, I'm sorry, 309 Bayberry Road, which is approximately 11.74 acres. It has two existing structures on the site. One is, was currently until late spring of last, fall, spring of last year, operated as Giant Steps. And the other one is approximately 30 years since it's been inhabited by anyone. The intent is to purchase the property and move the Walter Fitzgerald Campus, which is currently leasing space from the Bridgeport Arch Diocese on Biro Street, into this, into the existing building that was being used by Giant Steps up until spring of last year. The appropriation funds would cover the, as you read, that covered the cost of the purchase, along with the construction and minor upgrades and improvements to the building to allow us to operate the school in the 2122 school year at the site, existing site. We did, at the request of many town bodies, remove the 14,00305 for the physical moving of the FF and E from the Biro Street property to the Bayberry Road property. So we will work to cover that cost with operating costs. If you have any questions, concerns, the other thing, oh, to mention prior to turning over to questions is, I believe you all received a breakdown of carrying costs, and then we just, on Monday, sent out a kind of a total fact sheet, so you didn't have to dig through and find the information. We totaled it out, the cost of carrying versus leasing the other space.
Thank you, Mr. Papa George. Mr. Matola?
Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Just gonna ask my questions, whoever can answer these, fine. The information indicates that the roof was replaced, and there's a 20-year warranty, and looks like 2013, 2017, the roofs were replaced. I take it that the warranties carry over if we purchase the property. Is that correct?
I would defer to Mr. Baldwin to see if he happened to know the answer to that, otherwise I would have to get that answer.
Yeah, John, that will be all part of the closing documents, but I believe that is the case, but we'll confirm. Also, I want to add that Fussin' O'Neill is doing a full hazardous buildings review, hazardous materials building review on both buildings, but those studies have not yet been completed. But we're doing their due diligence in that regard. I believe you're correct.
On that, on that, that was one of my questions too. Is the hazardous building material assessment, is that going to be done before the closing, or is that something that happens afterwards?
It will be done. If I can answer that, Angeles, it will be done before the closing.
Okay.
We have a period, we have a period of due diligence to do that kind of stuff.
Gotcha. And then, one other question, I guess this would be for Mr. Cummings or whoever, Mr. Mancusi wants to answer it. On some of the information sheet that you provided us, you indicate that the maximum program enrollment for Walter Fitzgerald Campus, the maximum in student enrollment is 50 students. Is that based on the program that you provide, or is it the facility? In other words, if we wanted to have 60 students in there, could we do that? Or is the program, just the way it's set up, limited to 50?
That 50 capacity was, you know, that was established based on the program at St. Emory's.
All right. Could that change at this new facility, or is it going to still maintain that at 50?
Initially, we're going to maintain at 50, but yes, that could change, and that is something that we have thought about.
And then, I'm sorry, if you don't mind, one more question. Is, was this property on the tax rolls for the town of Fairfield, or is it, my understanding is the Catholic Church owned it at one time. Is that correct? Then, and then the Giant Steps buy it, and now we're going to buy it. Is it taxable property right now, or is it exempt? Does anyone know that?
I do, John. This is Jim Baldwin again. In fact, it has been tax exempt throughout its recent history, including going back to the days when it was owned by the diocese. It was only recently, I think in 2017 or 18, that the tax assessor at Fairfield thought that part of the property, specifically the second building, was not exempt. And that is the subject of a tax appeal, which is being resolved as part of this transaction.
Gotcha. Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. So, I want to get back to Mr. Mancusi's answer about the, the answer, Mr. Matola's question about the 50 children. So, I get the 50 children was a St. Emory's restriction. But just today, there was some additional data that came out, and I think Ms. Vitale answered by saying, hey, here's the good news, we got a, we got a better facility, we can bring in more kid, more kids are going to want to come there because it's a nicer facility. Are, are we limiting ourselves by 50? Because I thought the school had an occupancy of like 200, but I'm not saying for that program it would be 200. So, why are we limiting ourselves to 50?
We're not limiting ourselves at 50. That was, that was the number that was established. I'm sorry, this is Rob Mancusi, Director of Special Ed. We are not limiting ourselves at 50. That is the current max for the current location. We're certainly interested in expanding that number, moving into the other location. We're also looking at additional uses for space in that building.
Okay, I must have misunderstood you, because I thought you just said going into, moving into this building, we're going to limit the program at 50. So, so that's good news, because I know one of the things, so listen, I'm just going to say my piece about this, and then, you know, I won't have to say anymore. I think the building looks, first off, Mr. Papa George, thank you for the backup information that you provided, the board of selectmen that you provided us, especially on the, or Mr. Cummings, you know, the hardware, you know, the, when's the roof, when was the boiler? That was, that was great information and very helpful, thank you. But it was clear to me, taking a tour, that this building was very well maintained. And it's clear to me, there, you know, it was utilized in the right way. There's a lot of things that are staying there that I think are advantage to the town. So, I'll be voting for this tonight. But I think it's also very encouraging, after coming out of the current Walter Fitzgerald Campus, to know that there might be more kids that actually want to come there, and that we can, you know, expand, expand the program. And listen, if it's expand that program, or make other arrangements for that building, I think it's, I think it's a good bargain for the town overall. So, thank you for all the backup, Mr. Papa George.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. We did review this at, like, last Wednesday at our capital planning meeting, so we had a, we went back and forth, and I think a lot of our questions might have been answered, and we thank you for the tour. I'm not saying we're finished questions, I'm saying that, you know, we, but we did get some new information that we may want to check into tonight as well. But for, in some part, we have been through, we talked about this more than we'll. But this, but I'll turn it over to Mrs. Leclerc.
Hi, I have one question that was kind of triggered by the question that was just asked. And that is, do, are there ed specs that exist for this program already, or are you, do you have a need to create them?
Hi, Rob Mancusi again. There are no specific ed specs for the Walter Fitzgerald program. Yeah, we would have to create them. That number 50, if that's what you were referring to, that was, that number was established a couple of years ago, after consulting with staff on the program needs, the student needs, and the space available at Walter Fitzgerald.
Okay, so I guess what my question is, is because there's little renovation, we don't need a building committee, and we don't need, like, ed specifications. Do, is there any potential for any kind of reimbursement for this project or these costs? Or because it's turnkey, there really isn't?
There, there really isn't at this point. It's, I may have misspoken when I said renovations. It's more of just a upgrading of some type of security systems and some minor upgrades and improvements needed to operate at the standard of the Fairfield Public Schools. It's not something where we would have to go in and start moving walls and taking stuff down. It's just to bring it to the standard of the rest of the schools in the town.
And this is Rob Mancusi again. What is available to us with the, with the potential move to the Giant Steps on location is an additional revenue generator by accepting students from other districts who don't have an alternative high school program like Fairfield has. We have had the opportunity to accept other students from four other surrounding districts over the past couple of years. But once they saw the site, they, they kind of returned away. Okay, Mrs. Leclerc?
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I've turned to my phone, because I thought I was breaking up. Is this better? Okay, Ms. Charlton?
Thank you. A follow-up question relating to the potential for additional tuition revenue. I think it was stated that we currently were charging $35,000 out of district for Walter Fitzgerald. Is that number impacted at all by the condition of the school and what people were willing to pay? Is that consistent with other programs? Does that number go up based on, you know, you know, anticipated additional demand for the school? You know, can you just give us some insight as to how we got to the 35,000?
Sure. The 35,000, again, that was done by looking, it is, that's a base tuition. So students who come with a 504 plan, or an IEP where they get additional services, that would be an additional, you know, an additional cost above that $35,000. That 35,000 base tuition has not been changed in the two-plus years since we've started that, because we have not gotten a tuition student yet. We've had potential tuition students. Was, as I stated, once they've visited the location, other options. Yes, that is, you know, we can look at that base tuition, but that is only a base tuition. That doesn't include special education, or any kind of specialized services. And it is, it is still considered a in-district program. So, we would not expect to see it go up to the, you know, where the cost of tuition for like an outplacement or an out-of-district program was, where you're getting in the average tuition cost of 70,000. But that $35,000, once interest started to increase, we definitely could look at, at raising that base tuition.
Thank you for that, and that was the basis of my question. I did understand that our outplacements were significantly more expensive than $35,000. And perhaps that's because we are paying an additional amount for specialized services, and so if we were to have it come in the other direction, that would be included. But I was really trying to understand if the $35,000, for lack of a better term, is sort of a market rate.
The couple places that we know of that have, that are in district, that have tuition costs, are within that 35,000 for base tuition.
Okay, thank you very much.
Once you start increasing that, then you're getting closer to the outplacement rates.
Gotcha. Thanks again.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. Walsh?
Good evening. The current Walter Fitzgerald Campus that we currently utilize, we leased that, correct?
Yes.
And how much do we pay for that lease on a yearly basis?
Angeles?
I'm going to look right now for you.
It's, I've got it. My coming superintendent, it's $110,000, I think $110,250.
Yes.
Is that the net cost, the total cost in, or do we also have maintenance costs and things like that on top of that?
We also have maintenance costs on top of that.
And how much has that been averaging on a yearly basis?
So, the sheet that came out on Monday, that says annual estimated facilities expenses, it kind of breaks it down for you and gives you the total. So, total with the lease was at, at Biro Street was 143,339. And that includes such items as our security, our asbestos management plans, our roof PMs, our landscaping, elevate, no, they don't have an elevator there. Snow removal, phones, intercom systems, alarms, utilities.
And that's for where the Walter Fitzgerald Campus is right now?
Yes, that's the 108 Biro Street. And then on that sheet also, right next to it is the 309 Bayberry Road, is we laid out the expenses for that. And included in that was the average bond cost for the, for the purchase, and that came to 360,645. Some, some of the additional carrying costs for the new site are the, there is an elevator at that location, so that's taken into account. A lot of the other prices carry over. The big, the big driver with the number difference is the bond.
Okay. So, the, so the 143,039, that's kind of in your budget now and has been, correct?
Correct.
When does that lease expire?
The end of this fiscal year, so June 31st. And that was, that was a one-year extension that we were able to work with the Bridgeport Arch Diocese to get.
Right. And clearly, if we purchased the building with a town bond, as is proposed here, you'll no longer have these $143,339,000, or most of it, not in your budget. Just the lease amount of $110,250 that you won't have be spending, correct?
Correct. So, we would lose, we would lose the lease amount, but the rest of the carrying costs, we would continue to carry.
Okay. But there'll be some increased costs, as you said, because of the elevator contract and things like that.
Elevator, phones.
Okay. And where in your budget do you carry, do you have a section called leases in your budget?
We do. We have a specific line item for that lease, along with our other leases.
So, I presume then that we would see in your upcoming budget, which is due in almost 30 days, if this is approved, the lease number will go down. You should somehow see a corresponding reduction of $110,250.
We would cut that out of our operating budget, correct?
And I heard some of the discussion in regards, I lost my audio, my phone died. I heard some of the tuition, and the $35,000. It's your intent, you're going to try to get some tuition students?
Hi, this is Rob Mancusi again, Special Ed Director. Yes, our intent is to, and it has been for the past couple of years, since the board has approved allowing us to seek tuition students. We've had, we've had interest in the past from, you know, some area districts. It just never came to pass after they came and did the visit. And that was primarily feedback we received. They just, the, the, the building did not leave a good first impression.
Okay. And in looking at the, you have some other uses, are you talking about using the other parcels as well? Or is this proposal just for a building that's, that's ready to go right now? Because I guess we need to get it on the table. What, what, my thought is, we're giving you that building. It'll be a town-owned, and we would give you that building and any parking that would be necessary. But everything else on that whole property would be the town's property, until it's decided what's its best use. Am I mistaken by that thought, or no?
Mr. Walsh, it's my coming superintendent. No, you're not mistaken at all. I think that we were asked thoughts about what that other building could possibly be for the board of ed, for the Fairfield Public Schools, but our commitment at this point, you know, from both a financial and educational perspective, is to the current Giant Steps property only.
Okay. And to the town attorney, who controls, who can use what parts of the property? And how is that calculated?
The town controls who can use what other, other parts of the property.
Isn't it the RTM that decides the use of property pursuant to the charter?
Yeah, I would include the RTM as part of the town, absolutely.
Okay, but is it, is it their sole responsibility?
I think it's the collective responsibility of all town bodies to decide how the other parcel is going to be utilized.
All right, so the board of finance would have a role in that as well, is your opinion, people's opinion?
Well, it's speculative as to what you're talking about, but in all likelihood, if it, if it requires any funding, then the answer would be yes. So I would, I would expect that to be the case.
All right. If it didn't involve funding from the, from the board of finance, say, it was decided by the RTM that they would like the, the board of education to have the other building for whatever role they wanted to have in it. And if there's no town funding in it, the board of finance is not involved, correct?
Well, I, I'm not sure if I agree with your premise that the RTM would make that determination to begin with.
Okay, so it's not just the sole?
The, the idea, as articulated by the first elect woman, is to have all town bodies and committees, commissions, and, and people who are concerned with the possible uses, to collectively decide what would be the best use for that, that additional parcel, and that's to be decided at some point in the relative distant future.
All right. So if the RTM wanted to make the rest of the parcel, other than what's being used here, open space, they couldn't do that? Alone. Is that what you're saying?
I believe that the process that we have in, in place in town, that, that would be correct.
Okay. Because it was always, we were always kind of told in the past that it was the RTM that decided what the uses of the properties were. But maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken.
Well, I, I confess, Mr. Walsh, that, that I don't have the academic answer to that question right now, but I'd be happy to provide it to you. But I don't think that it's one which is, you know, relevant at this point. I mean, I know that the first elect woman wants to bring all town bodies together and, and for the town to make a decision together as to how the best use is of that property.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear that she's going to make it that all town bodies will participate.
Absolutely.
And I guess, so Angeles, I'm not sure whether it's you or Mr. Cummings. The other building, if you needed bigger space, seemed to be, obviously has more classrooms, right? If it was never redone?
It is, it is larger.
Okay. Would it be a better teaching space if you needed that much room?
I don't know. The argument would be a better teaching space. There's some limitations in that other building that would, I mean, other than the obvious construction needed to bring it back to an operating building. There's, there's additional things that would have to go into it as well, such as, there's one student bathroom in there, so we'd have to find additional spaces for other bathrooms. There's no elevator, it's a trial, it's a three-level building. There's no elevator, so ADA compliance would be some issues there as well. Smaller area, the cafeteria is a fairly small area as well. So, I mean, square footage-wise, yeah. square footage wise, yes, it's bigger. The, um, the abandoned building is 23,00717 and the Giant Step building is 17,901 square footage wise. So is it bigger? Yes, it's got some other, it's got additional, uh, classrooms upstairs and downstairs. There's, um, but I mean, other than, like I mentioned, a few things, the other things are, there's a classroom on the second floor that would have to be completely redone because of, it used to be a science room. It's got some piping and other issues in the building in the middle of the room. Um, other than that, the building has been identified to having good structural integrity to it. So there is a lot of good potential for town bodies to look at and make decisions on that building.
Right. Uh, and how many square feet is your central administration building? That you think you have your condo?
I do not have that in front of me. I apologize for that. I can get that for you.
Is there enough room to move central administration in there if it was redone?
Into what's considered the abandoned building at this point?
Yeah, the abandoned building, yep.
Um, I, I would say we'd have to investigate it further, but I think there could be potential there.
Okay. And what's the situation with the, um, with the condominium and the purchase option time periods that are available pursuant to the agreements we have with the, um, well, I guess it's not a landlord if it's your, uh, if you own a condominium, but it would be the manager, I mean, the condo association, I guess, or the developer.
So I have, I have to be honest, I did not pull up specifics about this particular space that we are currently in. I didn't know it was going to be on the table. Otherwise I would have been better prepared. I apologize for that. I do understand that there is a buyout requirement if we were to leave this space. I don't have the specifics on that, but I can pull that information together.
Okay. Attorney Baldwin, do you know anything about it? Cause I think they owe us like $3 million if, if we exercised, uh, they, it's really their right to exercise it and take it. Um, although it was extended, so I'm not sure what the terms of the extension were.
Yeah, I'm, I'm pulling up the contract now, but, uh, kind of under the gun here. I'm not sure if I can get you the answer at this moment. Um, uh, uh, likewise, I'm not, not prepared to, uh, to answer that question. I didn't know that it was going to come up, but I could, I could certainly try to find out.
All right. If you can't do it in a short time, then if you can get that information to us, I'd like to know when, whether we have a right to pull out of that or whether it's the, it, the owners of the whole properties, right? Whoever has the, the purchase option right. And I believe that there is leased at over $2 million, uh, buyout, right? Went up based on some inflationary value, which would probably been, how many years? Almost 20 years now. It would probably, uh, that number has to be over $20 million now. Because that, those funds, if we were ever pulled, we were able to pull out, it certainly would be used to invest in turning that other building. Something. Getting, I'd say obviously.
It, it, it's certainly one of the considerations that, um, that the town could, uh, could look into along with many others.
Yeah. If you can just ask that information when you have a chance, after you've had a chance to look at the documents, that would be, um, that would be helpful. And what, what time period do you think you're going to have back the, um, the full environmental testing?
I didn't know if Attorney Baldwin wanted to answer that, or you want me to answer?
Yeah. Angeles, I think you might be in a better position. You've been in touch with Fussin O'Neal.
So, yeah, so I can tell you Fussin O'Neal has been out to do their fieldwork. They were out yesterday and today. Uh, all samples have been tested and sent to lab. So we're hoping lab turnaround is a couple of days depending on today's storm. And then we should see result, we should see reports, uh, in the near future. The holiday will probably push them off slightly, but we anticipate having them by the end of the month.
Okay. And we're under contract to purchase this property right now, correct?
We have a, uh, a letter of understanding, a memorandum of understanding. The, the, the contract terms have not actually been signed yet. No deposit has been made.
No deposit has been made? Okay. Is there like some rush? Cause we were, had this put on for a special meeting that we had to purchase by a specific date?
I think the, the goal, uh, by all parties involved is to close before the end of the year by the stated desire of both the town and the seller.
Okay.
Was to close before the end of the year. I believe the, the Board of Ed has, uh, operational considerations and planning considerations. And certainly the, the seller is motivated by the ability of the town to close relatively quickly compared to other potential suitors who are out there.
Understood. I, I was just wondering whether there's a, you know, we don't close by December 31st, that our deal's done, they move on to other potential suitors, uh, on the property. All right. That's all I have for right now. Thank you very much, everyone. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Uh, Mr. DeWitt?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. Uh, I have a, a follow-on to Mr. Walsh's uh, question comment. So my best recollection, when we bought Hoyden Hill Lane, we bought a big piece of land up there. When we bought that, it had no intended purpose, but we put in the bond. We said, listen, we want it to be used for ball field, soccer field, what, whatever it was. Uh, much to Mr. Walsh's point, um, I remember making, putting that bond together because of that very reason that Mr. Walsh just said, because, because I was worried that it was going to go to, you know, again, open space and not be used. So I'm looking at the bond. It doesn't say anything about the use of the, of the land other than, it says we're buying the building and we're buying a lot of land, but it doesn't say anything about the use. So I'm not a hundred percent sure Mr. Walsh is incorrect that the RT, if, if, if there were open space, I don't think we would have a say in that. Um, now I agree with Mr. Baldwin. If we're going to put in a ball field and you need money, it's got to come through us. That's fine. I'm, but, but I, I am a little concerned right now based to Mr. Walsh's, uh, comment that the, the remaining land could turn into, um, open space. And believe me, I, I'm, I'm, I have no trouble trusting the, the first select woman. Um, but what if this is three years down the road and, and, you know, God forbid she's not first select woman. That's, that's a concern. I don't know if we want to address it or not, but I'll leave it for the rest of the board.
Comment on that too?
Sumatola?
Yeah. So, so, and I, I think it relates to what Chris and Mr. Walsh were saying, Jim Walsh. So the, the town purchases the property and the, just like any other school property, the town owns it, but the Board of Ed's in possession and control to use the property for educational purposes. Uh, and they control it for that specific purpose. I guess my question here is, uh, it is, is, and, and maybe you don't know the answer. It, will the Board of Ed have control of the entire parcel?
No.
Purchase it? But well, well, that's not, I, I know the Board of Ed has said that they want to put a fence up around the abandoned property, but so, so I guess my question, and maybe we have to figure this out, maybe not tonight, but Attorney Baldwin, what, what is the Board of Ed in control of with respect to this property? Obviously it's a Giant Steps building. Is it, and, and how much land around the building are they going to be in possession and control of for edu, for, for educational purposes? Is it the entire parcel or just, are you going to try to figure that out?
Uh, I, I, I can, this is Attorney Baldwin again. I can, I can tell you, uh, firmly that it is only for the, uh, intended immediate purpose of the Board of Ed, and it's limited to that building and its, uh, surroundings. And the fence that's going up is to separate itself physically from the rest of the property.
Okay. And so the town will be in control of that part of the property, I take it, right? And will be maintaining that?
That is correct.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, that, thanks. I think that, that clarifies my, my issue. And it may be it helps you, Chris and Jim and, and your questions too.
Uh,
Thank you, Sumatola. Uh, Ms. Marien?
Thank you very much. Just a question to follow up on Mr. Matola's question. From a, uh, the town will have liabilities for the building that's been abandoned if, if it's under the town control. So I'm just curious from an insurance standpoint, where the costs might go up? Because this building, we, we, when we went on our tour, we went into it. And I know you're going to place a fence around it physically separate it from Giant Steps, but also there was some concern walking in that building about, you know, um, something that could fall. The roof could cave in or whatever might happen and, or if somebody, God forbid, got hurt in that building. From a liability standpoint, this is going on the town. Have we looked at costs, um, that might be associated with keeping this building kind of safe or it's safe from, from people who might go in?
The answer is yes. Uh, it has been, uh, submitted by our risk manager to our insurance, uh, brokers to, to, and, and the answer is yes. So, uh, that is part of the equation, but we have not gotten numbers back yet as to how much, uh, increase, if any, uh, it will mean in terms of our insurance costs.
So I guess the follow-up question to that is, um, have there been discussions about demolishing this building, uh, just to remove, or again, or is there discussion about that the integrity of the building is intact, um, and we would keep it or, and then build within it? Or is there discussion about the costs related, um, to demolishing the building to eliminate some of that risk?
It is our understanding that the so-called bones of the building are perfectly fine with the exception of the roof, which has issues, but the remainder of the building is reportedly in good shape. But, um, it is yet to be determined as to, you know, what's the best use, whether it's to demolish it and rebuild or just demolish it. That's, that's all to be determined.
Okay. So I guess my next question would be the process. I mean, obviously if this goes through tonight, this is approved, then, then that process, um, that would take place in terms of looking at the best use. What, what is that process?
As I alluded to earlier, it is a, um, a dialogue between all town bodies, uh, and discussion and, and vetting of different ideas as to what the best use is, especially once you've done kind of those structural, you know, studies and that sort of thing. Um, but it's, the idea here is, is not to make any decisions with respect to that other part of the property, but rather to move forward, uh, with the, uh, the Board of Ed's needs.
Thank you. And I just have one more question going to the liability issue, which is that, um, I think it was Mr., the superintendent, Mr. Cummings had said that somebody had broken in to that building just recently. Um, broke, broken in is probably, I mean, you can pretty much walk in, but had gone in and, um, it was just within a matter of weeks. Are we going to have some sort of security system set up beyond just a physical fence around this building or some way of monitoring, um, access to that building?
Uh, it would probably be a good idea to have, have something in place, but, uh, I, I can honestly tell you that, uh, that has not yet been vetted. Uh, but it would be wise to have as much, um, you know, security measures in place as possible and as feasible.
Right. So I guess it just gets to the, the point of cost, you know, that there, that the costs that we're being presented with may not be truly the complete picture if we haven't looked at that, those aspects of the other piece of property.
I, this, this is Jared Schmidt. I can help out a little bit there. Late in the, late in our research, we did, we had the risk manager look into, uh, the insurance cost and, uh, based on feedback from KERMA that they determined that with an empty building, it would add about $12,000, $1,250, uh, to our annual cost. If it were, if there are contents in it, it might go as high as 2,500. So in the ongoing costs, we included $2,500 a year, uh, to cover the additional insurance coverage.
So wait, I'm, I'm confused. You're saying it, the, on the low end, it was 2,500 and on the high end, it was 12,000?
No, on the, on the low end, it was 12, uh, 1,250.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said 12,000.
I apologize. If I misspoke, I apologize. 1,250 on the high end, it was about 2,500.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Ms. Leclerc?
My question is for Jim Baldwin, and it's a follow-up to what we were previously discussed on the, um, the uses of the property. Um, on our agenda and in the, the, um, fund, um, it does not mention the other potential uses. Can we add language in there to just say other potential town uses, um, so that it, we make it clear that it's not just the Walter Fitzgerald campus that we're purchasing the property for?
Uh, I would have to check with bond counsel if, if it's necessary. Uh, because, uh, from my standpoint, I don't think it, that it is because I think that the entire purchase is up to the town and what you use. Um, but yeah, we could, we could ask bond counsel that question.
Does the RTM approve the, the, um, the bond motion in addition to us or is it just us?
It does.
Okay. So if we didn't do that tonight, then they would have the opportunity to add that if, if we needed them to?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Mr. DeWitt?
Just so we're clear, Mr. Chris DeWitt, um, I, I, I agree with Ms. Leclerc. I, I think that should be added. So can we officially request that bond counsel? We can vote on it tonight. Maybe it can be amended as, um, at, at the RTM. I'm not saying don't vote on it tonight, but I, I, I would feel a lot better if it did say something along the lines of, um, what use we had for the, for the rest of the, of the land. Back, back to Mr. Walsh's comment.
Understood. Sure.
Mr. Matola?
I, I'm fine with that also. My only concern is the, in the Board of Select, they've already voted on this. Bond as it's written. So I don't know if they would have to re-vote on it. That's something that Jim Baldwin would probably have to check with bond counsel. So that's all.
Uh, Mr. Walsh? Can you hear me, everyone? Yeah. So I just went to, I went to the charter because I knew there was some type of provision. And I couldn't find anything in regards to the RTM. But then I went to the code of the town and lo and behold, there's a whole section, Article 35, Section 35, however you want to call it. Um, and under 35 dash 12, there's a whole entitled designation of use of acquired land. Um, under Section C, it seems to suggest that it's the RTM who clearly has the right to designate the property after we acquire property. So it's only going to be them that decide. Section C is designation of use. And I'll just read you. It's actually C3, property acquired from, or And I'll just read you, it's actually C3, property acquired from or after the enactment of Section 35-12, already enacted, so this would be acquired after. Says, "All property acquired by purchase or donation after the enactment of Section 35-12 shall be designated as directed by the RTM in the resolution authorizing the acquisition of such property, consistent with any requirements of state or federal law, any valid municipal law, a valid regulation of the Town Planning and Zoning Commission, or any valid deed restriction regarding the use of the property. And if they make no designation, then the property shall be designated as open space, as defined by subsection B, and should be administered at that point by further designation of the RTM or by the conservation. So the RTM is going to have to make it designation. And only they can do it. So I guess it's in their resolution to pass. It doesn't say it has to be in a bond resolution, but we have no role in it. It's really only the RTM.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Baldwin, do you have a comment on that, or thoughts?
Well, I appreciate your thoughts on that, but I think it comes down to, again, how does it come to the RTM, and the fact that, I'm looking at this right now. The, the town bodies will collectively decide how best to use that. If this property is, it's definitely being purchased for the town, and the town is deciding to designate a portion of the property to the Board of Education for its particular uses. But that doesn't take away the fact that the entire parcel is town-owned. So I think that we're, we're kind of splitting hairs here a little bit. I mean, whether it's a lease agreement with the Board of Ed to the town, or what have you. But the determination of how that property is going to be used is ultimately up to the RTM. But how it gets there, and how that decision is made, is one which is going to be a matter of all town bodies, with the ultimate decision being made by the RTM. That's correct.
Okay.
That's how it's been presented, and that's how it's being presented to you, and how it's being presented to the RTM.
Really, and being on some of these votes before, over the last 10 years, I know that they've been very clear, at least at the RTM level, having to have it in their resolution, what their designation is. Because if they didn't designate it, it would automatically go to open space and fall under And they can change that designation, the RTM, at any time, but since we all know what this is for, it just seems like somewhere along the line, they should designate it. We may be approving this over the next couple of days.
It kind of cuts against the concept of leaving that decision to be made at a subsequent time. So I understand the point that you're making, but I think that then you're asking the RTM to make the decision on how that other parcel is going to be used. And I think that this is being presented by everybody involved as conceding that that designation is to be determined. So I don't know how else to answer your question. Do you, are you proposing that we designate, that the RTM designate exactly how that property is going to be used? Because that's not the intent of the purchase, or the proposal this before you.
No, I guess what I'm saying is that the RTM should at least make, at a minimum, state somewhere in a resolution that they are designating the better of the two buildings to be used for the Board of Education purposes, to be able to run their program, or whatever type of program they want to run. And that the other portion, they are not going to have the open space right now, but maybe even be open space and have a future designation at all.
Fair enough. And so to that point, I'm not sure if that needs to be in the bond resolution, or whether it needs to be in this resolution, but that's a fair point.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it has to be in the bond resolution at all, because this body, I mean, I know we don't have anything to do with making the designation. I'm more raising the issue because I know we've been in trouble with this. How to be filled on it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Matola?
I just followed up on Mr. Walsh's, that I, yeah, maybe the RTM needs to do something. Maybe the RTM needs to do something like that. What I don't want to happen, and maybe I, and I'm just pulling this from my mind, is if we purchase property, we don't designate what it is, and it automatically becomes open space, do we get in trouble later on? Can we convert open space into other uses? And I, and again, I could be wrong, but just keep this in the back of your mind. There's somewhere that if we convert open space for other uses, then we have to find similar property to designate it as open space, to replace the open space that we're turning into something else. So, and I may be wrong about that, and I'm just throwing that out there, but I think there's state law or local ordinance that talks about that. So, and Mr. Baldwin, I know you'll look into it. That's all I'm saying. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Any other questions on the item before us, or comments, before we move to a vote? Ms. Vitali?
Hi. I appreciate the conversation that was just had. I would just like to say, for the Board of Ed, right now, our interest is to follow up on the memo sent to you today, that we are really looking at this property for the Walter Fitzgerald campus and the existing building, the abandoned building. We have plans to secure it, maintain the property to budget for the maintenance of landscaping, but that really, at this point in time, is where our interest stops. We are open to discussing, you know, future land use with the town bodies. When we first found out that this property had become available, we really weren't thinking about both buildings at first. We went to the First Selectwoman, really, just with the opportunity, wanted to work with the town from the start on this, would be open to the RTM discussing it, but I would hope that this conversation doesn't stop this project in its tracks. We really, we need this building for these students. As Mr. Papa George says, our lease at St. Emory's ends at the end of June. We spent a lot of time looking for another location without much luck. And I think that it would really, acquiring this property would be excellent for our most of our students in the short term, and I think moving forward presents real possibilities for the town in the future. So I hope that you earn your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Vitali. Mr. Walsh?
I just, right before we vote, I just want to explain my, I guess my personal. I wanted to hate this building, because I don't think we could afford a lot of new things, but it was the perfect building, and it's a perfect property. And this program that we run out of the Walter Fitzgerald facility, that we lease now from the Diocese, after going for tours on it, I think personally, I was kind of embarrassed by the place. I don't think it's a great spot. I think it needs a lot of work. Some of the spaces were, so in such bad condition, they were a little bit disrespectful. I understand the boards trying to find a good spot for them. I think this place is turnkey. If it wasn't turnkey, I don't know if I'd be voting for it, but it's so turnkey, respectful space, and I think all of our students deserve to be in a respectful space, that we need to do it, unfortunately. I mean, I don't want to do it, but I see an opportunity, I'm never one to lose an opportunity, so I think we have to do it, and that's why I'm going to be voting for it. After the money that we committed to the Verro, the increase in the teachers' income, we are kind of in a town, kind of going in the wrong direction in the recent expenses, and I didn't want to add another expense with more bond interest. But this is an opportunity that is rare, I think, being able to get the students out of that bad situation, and into a permanent spot, and into a respectful space. To vote for it, I would rather, as reluctantly as I can, but be proud of the space that we're in. That's, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Ms. Marien?
Thanks. I do just have one more question for Mr. Cummings of the Board of Ed. Because I noticed in Ms. Vitali's memo to us in terms of pretense for the Giant Steps property, she mentioned a targeted early literacy program, which I don't know a lot about, which, if implemented in the space at the Giant Steps current property, would enable us to avoid outplacing Fairfield students. So I just, I don't know a lot about it. You don't have to go into great detail. It sounds like you want to develop that, but I was just thinking, you know, is this a place that you envision developing to bring students from outside Fairfield to? Is there any revenue involved in that, that that would generate? Again, just a brief synopsis of, excuse me, summary of what that is, and what it looks like in terms of numbers? Not only revenue, but are we going to save money in the district from not outplacing these students if you use the Walter Fitzgerald new campus for this?
Okay, thank you. Mike?
There we go, I'm sorry. The purpose of that would be to reduce out, current outplacements, and to keep more students in district, students who need particular support in literacy at the early age. So this would be a primary grade-type problem, a program.
So it would be more cost avoidance, Ms. Marmian, than an income generator? I think at this point, and Mr. Mancusi can correct me, not that we, I don't think that we would be looking for tuition, you know, to look, to add out-of-district students at first, as we are with Walter Fitzgerald. It would be more cost avoidance, just to keep our students in district, rather than having them outplaced. Which, you know, can be a significant savings.
So I guess my question is, what, can you give me an estimate of what we spent in the past year in terms of outplacement literacy programs for Fairfield?
I don't have a figure to give you right now, but I could tell you, there are many students this year that we've lost to outplacements, whether unilateral placements or PPT placements of young students who have significant literacy deficits, or dyslexia and other reading disabilities that we feel that we can program for, if able to provide the appropriate instruction in district. So, and those programs can range from anywhere to $60,000 to $90,000 per placement. So it would be a significant cost avoidance while building our capacity to maintain more students in district.
Thank you. So just as a follow-up, if you could, if you could get us numbers from maybe the past year or two years of what that's cost us in terms of the outplacement, that would be great. I don't need it now, I appreciate.
You can get that for you.
If you could just get it for the future. Thanks very much.
Sure, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Any further questions, comments going once? Okay, this item is before us. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Be Mr. Testani, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Matola, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marmian, and Ms. Leclerc. Okay, so that, all those opposed? Okay, it's unanimous in favor. Onto the RTM. Thank you, Board of Ed.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good holiday, everybody, if I don't see you.
Take care. Safe.
Okay, item number four. To here consider and act upon a request from the Purchasing Policy Committee to transfer $20,000 from the general fund contingency to the Board of Finance Fees and Professional Services Budget for the creation of a new purchasing policy. Can I have a motion to put this on the table before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola. And Mr. DeWitt, as Chair of the Purchasing Policy Committee, I'll turn this item over to you.
Wonderful, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Chris DeWitt. So you'll remember, a couple meetings ago, they're kind of running, all in running into each other, we've had so many. I made a statement about the purchasing policy that was delivered to the committee, and it wasn't exactly good, there was lacking a lot of things. And I, it had discussed with Ms. Charlton, who's also on the committee, that we should go out, I thought we should go out to Mr. Centafani, who's our auditor, and get a quotation for what it would take for him and his firm to write a brand-new purchasing policy for the town. So that's in your backup. Mr. Centafani came back and said it's $15,000 to $20,000, which I think is actually a fair price. But fast forward to two days ago, I had a very informative meeting with Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Foley, who's our purchasing director and the First Selectwoman, and a couple others. Sorry if I've forgotten who else was on the call. And Mr. Foley had delivered to me, and I subsequently delivered to Ms. Charlton for the committee, what I consider to be a very comprehensive policy, and much improved from the last policy, in which I, you know, made general statements. I was really impressed with the data. There were some comments that I made from the original, my original comments, that I believe Mr. Foley took to heart, but he delivered a subsequent document that I think is substantially closer to what we need it to be. So I'm not, I'm not saying that we should remove Mr. Centafani from the process altogether. In fact, I think what I'm recommending is that maybe he turns from a creator role at $20,000 to more of a reviewer role for less amount of money. And with that, I'd like to postpone the vote for the $20,000, which I hope will change to a lower number, to a date certain, Mr. Chairman, which would be January 4th, I believe?
January 5th. First regular meeting would be January 5th.
January 5th. Yeah, and I'd ask, I'd ask my other committee member, Ms. Charlton, if she wants to add anything before we, maybe we vote on that.
I don't have too much to add, I'll just concur with Mr. DeWitt's view. I made my way through most of the revised policy this morning. It is much more comprehensive, it's 85 pages, I believe, in fact.
Eighty-six, yeah.
Eighty-six, and it's, you know, fairly well organized. I think it is going to be important, I would, I hope we do ultimately have Mr. Centafani review it, because I think we want to make sure that, among other things, there's a clear connection in terms of the revisions in the policy to the issues that were identified in his audit report, that we've got something that reflects best practices, and then it also covers off on some of the issues that led to, you know, the Philpile situation, and the later arrests that just happened a month or two ago. So, but I think he's got a better starting point, and I think Chris but I think he's got a better starting point, and I think Chris characterized it perfectly in that, you know, he'll probably turn from a creator to a reviewer. So I think, um, you know, it'll take some time to do that, but I do expect that his, his fee would be substantially lower. So I think the process would be that once this, um, document, I think the purchasing team, uh, is, has to make a few more tweaks to it, but once it's done, that new policy, we can get it over to Mr. Centafani, and he would have a chance to give us a revised estimate of his fee to review it and provide comments back and that, and then we can, um, circle back on the 5th and, uh, get that process moving forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Charlton. Ms. Marmian?
Thank you very much. Well, that's great news. Um, really good news. Thank you for all your work on this. I'm just confused about the process here. Did, was Mr. Foley kind of working on a parallel track, or did he take the comments from Mr. DeWitt and Ms. Charlton and kind of say, let me take a crack at this, or I, I'm just confused in terms of...
Yeah.
How this, how this came to pass. You could just tell us.
If, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
To DeWitt?
So, um, um, yes, that Mr. Mr. Foley was working on what he characterized to be a procedural manual. You know, there's a policy, you know, in, 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 in the world, I think of the policy is the big overall document, and then smaller procedural documents go out to individual departments. And, uh, Mr. Foley was working on what he considered to be a procedural document. Uh, I mean, it took me about five seconds to look at it and said, no, this is our policy, because it's quite comprehensive. So, um, um, I'll, I'll take, uh, I'll take some responsibility for maybe a little miscommunication, um, with Mr. Bremer's team on the whole policy procedure, but, uh, the good news is that he was working behind the scenes on this, and, um, did, he did generate 86 pages of, I mean, good data. This is not just cut and paste stuff. There's a lot of, there's a lot of substantial data. And, and, and I might add, one of the biggest problems that both Ms. Charlton and I had last time was there was no, um, correlation matrix, if you will, from the audit finding to the proceed, to the, to the procedure and how it answered it. Uh, Mr. Foley has, has, uh, delivered that to us for this. So, and I, I'd be lying if I told you I read every word of it in the last two, 86 pages in the last two days. I'm sure Ms. Charlton did a lot more than I did, but at first blush, it's much more comprehensive and a lot closer to where we need to be.
I just, you know, I'm, this is, again, great news, and hopefully the cost for what he presents for review is, is, you know, significantly less than the $20,000 that we were thinking. But I just, I'm just going to express concern that I, I want to know that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing and that there's communication and that, you know, the waste of, so, and time is of the essence in terms of risk to the town and following through on these recommendations. So, um, I, I want to express a little bit of concern that, that this wasn't seemingly coordinated effort and that we weren't fully informed in terms of what we were looking at last time, that there was a missing piece. So, anyway.
Well, I, I can, can I, um, can I respond as well on that? So, and Sheila, this is Lori Charlton. Sheila, thank you, uh, for raising that. You know, I think it wasn't quite as you characterized it. Mr. Bremer did in fact communicate to us that there was a procedure manual being put together, but as Mr. DeWitt said, policies and procedures are two different things. The policies are the rules and the procedures are how you go about doing something, you know, the steps of implementing things. So, we viewed, you know, we knew a procedure manual was coming or was being developed, but we viewed that separately from the policy, which governs things like, you know, approval, um, you know, thresholds, approvals, uh, you know, the actual policies. Um, as Mr. DeWitt said, the, the policy piece is now incorporated into this procedure manual, and a lot of the quote policies that we thought were missing or inadequate are, are embedded in there as well. So, I, I hear what you're saying, but I, I don't think it was, um, a matter of the right hand not knowing what the left was doing. I think it was just, you know, when, when we looked at the policy, which was short, it seemed to have a lot of holes in it. You know, we knew procedures were coming. We didn't, we didn't expect that to, to fill all the gaps. So in, in any event, I think we're, we're on a good path now. Um, you know, Mr. Foley's team, uh, has done a nice job. I, I still think it's really important to get benchmarking of this and have Joe look at it and, and make sure that we've got all the right considerations, but I, I agree with you. It is good news and we're, um, on the right track and, and grateful to Mr. Foley and his team for the work that they've done. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Charlton. Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah, and, and if I may, um, and, and I'll ask, I'll ask Mr. Schmidt to, to back me up on this. So, what, what I found, what I really liked about the meeting we had this week, with again, Mr. Schmidt was there and First Select Woman and Mr. Foley, a couple others, um, I made it very clear to the First Select Woman that, you know, this was our policy, right? And, and, and I was, I was hard on that team at the beginning because I didn't think I was getting what I wanted, and I'm still going to remain hard on the team and, and they've responded, right? Um, but I'll tell you, um, the First Select Woman, if I may speak for her for just a second, she committed that, you go, we're, our team, the, the town hall team is committed to delivering a policy that we can work with, but it's ultimately up to us. So, so if, if, if I as the committee chair kept you out of some of the early iterations of it, and maybe which make you think there was miscommunication or one hand not talking to the other, you know, I'll take responsibility for that, but, um, I feel, I feel very well connected back to town hall on this after that meeting. Would you agree with that, Mr. Schmidt?
I do agree. And yet, no, I think that was a very productive meeting. Uh, you know, as far as the right hand not knowing what the left hand is doing, and I think you, Mr. DeWitt, uh, characterized it properly as well as, uh, Ms. Charlton, that this was always something that we had been working on, and I think the, uh, the difference may have come from some nuances of what, what is policy, what is procedure, what's a manual?
Right.
And even, even going through this process, I know in talking to Mr. Foley, when you look at different towns, they all do it differently. And you, you may see, you may see policies that are 15 pages and you may see other ones that are 80 pages.
Right.
And so I think towns, towns view it differently, and we always, we had a certain, uh, and have had a, a view that there would be a policy, but there would al, always be a procedural document and on the back end. Um, and so we, we, two together.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess we're to my motion with, or my request to move it to a date certain, please.
Yes, and that is before us. Are there any further comments, questions? Okay, all those in favor in moving item number four to date certain, January 5th, our first regular meeting of 2021, say aye.
Aye.
And that...
Thank you.
That is unanimous. Thank you very much.
I was wondering what I was going to do over Christmas break, anyway.
Yeah, I do want to thank Mr. DeWitt and Ms. Charlton for putting, you guys have put a lot of work into this. We appreciate that and appreciate, uh, the town working with us to, uh, try and get this to bed at least, let's say by the end of the first quarter. Well, what would that be? The third quarter of, uh, of, uh, of the town's fiscal year?
Right.
Okay, item number four to here, consider and approve the 2021 meeting schedule. Have a motion to put this before us. We're going to vote on this. Ms. Charlton, seconded by Mr. Testani. Okay, this is a typical Board of Finance schedule, uh, kind of went way off course this year, or at least during the year 2020. And that's coming to an end. So I do want to make one correction here right, right away, is in February, February 2nd is the regular meeting, and February 16th is the quarterly meeting. So that just has to be reversed. Other than that, Mr. DeWitt went through this pretty thoroughly. We both have talked to, uh, Ms. Carpenter, who put this together. So are there any questions, comments on the meeting schedule? Mr. Walsh?
Yeah, it just seems though it could be simpler with the way this has been going for a while, that we just put a weekly meeting on every Thursday night. Just have 52 meetings, and then we'd be actually more pleasantly surprised when we didn't have a meeting and you could cancel.
Twice a week, Jim. Let's do it twice a week.
Now, what do we have? 35 meetings or 38 meetings this year?
I do not second that motion.
Should specify that each meeting goes from 7:00 to midnight. So just, you know, with the way in advance.
Yes, we, we did. We had 30, about 35 meetings this, uh, this year. So, I don't think we want to take up Mr. Walsh's, uh, perhaps proposed motion.
No.
Okay, okay. Any other comments on the meeting schedule? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It is, it is unanimous. Okay, thank you. This is, uh, it's 8:20 about. This is almost record time unless item number six holds us up. To here, consider and act upon any communication. Uh, Mr. Schmidt, you have anything for us?
I have nothing additional to add.
Jared, that's disappointing, Jared.
I'm sorry to, I'm, I'm not sorry to not prolong this.
Lori's got to get outside and start shoveling.
I do.
So this is our last meeting, this is our last meeting of, uh, 2020, we think. We still have, God, about 10 days to go.
We still have 10 days to go.
The last item, number seven, is to, uh, Ger. And with Ms. Charlton, seconded by Ms. Marmian, you guys have a great holiday.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Well, buddy. Good night.
Merry Christmas.